This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the Town of North Haven.
Evening, everyone. My name is Stacy Yarborough and welcome to our special town meeting tonight. Pursuing to the North Haven Town Charter, Chapter 9. This town, special town meeting will now come to order. My introduction is a little more lengthy as you can probably understand because of COVID and because of the special circumstances of doing this type of meeting via Zoom. So please forgive the length. So again, good evening. My name is Stacy. I am the North Haven Town Clerk. As indicated in the notice of the special town meeting, the meeting is being held via Zoom, video conference and conference call. And there is no in-public access to the meeting. A video conference link and dial-in conference call number was provided for all interested members of the public in the past to participate in this meeting. I would ask that if you have your phones on or if you are listening in via the video conference audio, if you're not speaking, if you could please mute, put the mute button on so that we don't have a whole lot of background noise, that'd be most appreciated. So I do have some important instructions regarding how we'd like to see this meeting proceed, just so that everything can be done, so that everyone can participate and everyone can hear contention upon my not being the master of Zoom. So thank goodness we have Alex, our IT Director here tonight. So he will hopefully watch out for all the glitches. First of all, every time you speak, please unmute your phone and/or your computer audio and please state your name and address for the record or your title if you are a town employee or official. Secondly, we do need to be careful about speaking over each other so that everyone who is listening can hear what's being said and also because we need to have a clear record. For this reason, when it comes time for the public to comment or to ask questions or to vote, I will ask those who are participating or the moderator will ask or the Zoom master will ask those participating via video conference to please provide their name via the chat option, which is usually at the bottom of your screen. And we'll also ask our Zoom master, Alex Linos, to call all those names of those who wish to speak one at a time. So he'll try to keep it in an orderly fashion, orderly queue. After we've received the comments and questions from those who are participating via the video teleconference, then we will take the comments and questions from those participating via a regular telephone call. Thirdly, the special town meeting is being recorded and the recording will be posted on the town's website as soon as I prepare the minutes and the video will be placed up within a day or so. Lastly, given that this is a remote meeting, all votes will be taken by a roll call vote. In order to effectively do this, all persons eligible to vote at this meeting who wish to vote need to provide their name and address as soon as possible, to be honest with you, prior to the election of a meeting moderator. Because we have to have all that information for any votes that take place. Now to clarify who's eligible to vote tonight on any issue, when it comes to any voting, including the meeting moderator, just like at a regular town meeting, you have to be an elector to cast a vote. To be an elector of the town, the following are required. You have to be a registered voter in our town at the time of the most recent election or one who pays taxes to the town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grand list. A citizen of the United States at 18 years of age or older. This requirement, as I've noted, is enforced at all times for any votes, including meeting moderator. If you are unsure, if you are a true elector, I have the town registrar right sitting next to me here and I can check for you real quick. So you'll need to be able to ask me and I can tell you right away. I do believe that when you're using the phone, that, and you can double check with Alex on this, that you press *6. Am I correct on that, Alex?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now, for those electors participating via video conference who would like to vote this evening, please go ahead and provide your name and address via the chat option, which is featured at the lower portion of the screen. And Alex, Mr. Linos, will read those names and addresses into the record. It'll take a few moments for that to occur. Alex, let me know when you're ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stacy, I'm gonna let all the names come in and then I'll scroll back and record.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
So we'll give everybody a few minutes here.
Yes, no worries. I'm also screenshotting everything so I know exactly who's here and all of that.
Do you need the address as well?
Yes, we do actually need them to give their addresses. Please. Also, we might want to take into consideration that if more than one person is using a phone line, we will need to be cognizant of that fact as well, especially when it comes time to voting. Mr. Quimby, I like your background.
Thank you.
Stacy, there's two other phone numbers that are in there besides Sally Buemi.
All right, we're gonna do those after we get, okay.
Okay.
I don't know if we're, let's see, we don't have addresses for... Okay, uh, let me see. All right.
Already when you are...
Let me just take a quick count of what we have in the chat.
Well, some may be just chatting to you, so I'm gonna wait for you to go through it all.
Okay. Uh, we have roughly 20.
Okay, go ahead. We have to read them into the record.
Start at the top. Carl, and I apologize if I butcher anybody's last name, Carl Vianz, 81 Millbrook Road.
Correct. You nailed it.
Thanks. Valerie Goodkin, 25 Winchester Drive. Jennifer Caldwell, 69 Kimberly Circle. Maurice Varney, 2 Cindy Lane. Jennifer Atkins, 67 Upper State Street. Mark Patron, 1 Summer Lane. Paul Janushevsky, 15 Justine Drive. John Quimby, 421 Skiff Street. Mai Tan, 34 Clintonville Road. Mark De Nicola, 600 Washington Ave, Apartment B2. Nancy Barrett, 1 Crestview Drive. Carol Atkins, 67 Upper State Street. Joseph Sisigano, 13 Anthony Road. Thomas Crilly, 6 Highland Park Road. Michael Frida, 90 Highland Park Road. Lori Varney, 2 Cindy Lane. I believe I read this name already.
I'm writing them down. What is it?
Robert De Nicola.
Yes, we have that one.
Okay. Uh, Mary Catherine...
No, 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 we don't. That was Mark De Nicola.
Okay.
It's Roberta.
Roberta, I'm sorry. Thank you. Roberta De Nicola, 600 Washington Ave, Apartment B2.
Okay. Who was the one right after Carl? The first one. Who was the second one, between Carl and Val?
There, I didn't have anybody between Carl and Val.
Oh, I must have, must not have heard you correctly then. Okay. Excellent.
And we have, we still have a few more here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mary Catherine Patron, 1 Summer Lane.
Okay.
Uh, Teresa Ranciato Velli. I don't have your address.
100 Bassett Road, sorry.
That's okay. Anthony Minicucci, 96 Blakesley Avenue. Uh, Pasquale Mercurio, 8 Susan Lane. And Robert and Linda Kovak, 257 Mill Road. Yes.
Is that it?
Uh, William Piper, 28 Bassett Road. And that is the last name I have on the chat.
All righty. Oh, right. Perfect. Thank you very much, everyone, for entering that information for us. At this time, it looks we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24. 24 video conferencing, not including myself and Alex. And then, at this time, I would ask for all those electors participating via conference call to please provide their name and address.
Uh, Sally Buemi, 5 Blossom Drive.
Anyone else on the telephone tonight with us?
Jane and Kurt Andrews, 401 Clintonville Road.
Thank you. So we have three. Alex, are you seeing more than three?
Do you have three already? I heard two.
I have Sally, Jane and Kurt Andrews.
There's a phone number... I do see another land, I do see another phone number connected, but I don't know if they're connected to a chat or not.
Nope. Well, we'll take a roll call vote with all people who have provided their names on any votes that do come forward at this time. If you join late, we're gonna have to, if they're joining late, can you see that? And we'll have to just let them know they have to put their name down, Alex.
Okay.
Great, excellent. Thank you, everyone, for your patience so that we can make sure everyone can participate tonight in appropriate manner. At this point of our meeting is when we have to do the vote, or excuse me, we have to do nominations for a vote for meeting moderator. The meeting moderator is nominated and elected by you, the members of the meeting. It is the moderator's function to bring before all meetings that we have for the town all the items that are listed in the warning of the meeting and also to assist in obtaining the objective of our meeting while ensuring the rights of the individual voters who wish to be heard. Lastly, the moderator's duties include helping members of the meeting who maybe have some questions that they are seeking clarification or importantly so, to advise everyone with regard to parliamentary procedure. At this time, I'm going to open up the floor for nominations for the meeting moderator.
I would like to nominate Teresa Ranciato Velli, Valerie Goodkin, 25 Winchester Drive.
Um, is there a second for Miss Ranciato Velli?
Second, Paul Janushevsky.
Second, Sally Buemi, 5 Blossom.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for tonight's meeting moderator? Going once, going twice, hearing none, I will now, and this is going to be by way of roll call, don't forget, I will now place forward Teresa Ranciato, sorry, Teresa Ranciato Velli as our meeting moderator. When you hear your name called by Alex, please signify if you are in favor of Teresa as our meeting moderator by saying aye and signify if you are opposed by saying nay. Mr. Leon Linos, will you please call the electors?
Yeah, I'm just gonna go down the list the same way the names came in, so.
Thank you.
Uh, Carl Vianz.
Hi.
Valerie Goodkin.
Aye.
Jennifer Caldwell.
Aye.
Maurice Varney.
Aye.
Jennifer Atkins.
Aye.
Mark Patron.
Aye.
Paul Janushevsky.
Aye.
John Quimby.
Aye.
Mai Tan.
Aye.
Uh, Mark De Nicola.
Aye.
Nancy Barrett.
Aye.
Joseph Sisigano.
Sisigano. Aye.
Sorry. Okay. Uh, Thomas Crilly.
Aye.
Michael Frida.
Aye.
Lori Varney.
Aye.
Roberta De Nicola.
Aye.
Mary Catherine Patron.
Aye.
Uh, Teresa, I will skip. Um, Anthony Minicucci.
Aye.
Pasquale Mercurio.
Aye.
Uh, Robert and Linda Kovak.
Aye.
Aye.
William Piper.
Aye.
That's...
You just missed Carol Atkins.
Aye.
Did we? Okay.
Do you have a telephone? Do you want me to call those, Alex?
Yeah, um, yes, I didn't keep track of the phones.
That's okay, no worries. Sally Buemi?
Aye.
Jane Andrews?
Aye.
Kurt Andrews?
Aye.
All righty, so everyone has voted in favor of Teresa Ranciato Velli as tonight's moderator. Therefore, I do declare her as the moderator for tonight's special town meeting. Welcome, Teresa.
Thank you all. Good evening. Okay, so the town clerk will now read the call of the meeting.
Thank you very much. "A special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of North Haven, Connecticut, was set to commence tonight at 6:30 PM, which is Monday, the 25th day of January 2021, for the following purpose: to consider and act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the approval of an amended Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan dated on January 7, 2021."
The town clerk will read item 1 of the agenda this evening.
Our one and only item for tonight's meeting is, again, to consider and act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the approval of an amended Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan.
So we will now have a discussion on this agenda item. For the ensuing discussion, everyone who wishes to speak will get an initial chance to comment before anyone can be called a second time. Discussion will be limited to this item only. For those electors participating via video conference who would like to speak, provide your name and address via the chat feature located at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Mr. Linos will read your names and addresses into the record for the order in which they're received. And after the comments from those individuals are received, I'll call for any comments from those electors participating via conference call. Um, I am now going to call on Mike Frida for Selectmen to provide the brief presentation.
Thank you very much and welcome, everybody, and thank you for joining us this evening. So I'd like to give a brief overview and then get into about a nine-slide presentation. I wanted to let everyone know that the genesis of where we are tonight started in my office about two and a half years ago when Chief Paul Janushevsky and I met with all the captains of the volunteer houses. I see Reese Varney on the call here. He was very instrumental in this as one of the captains. And our goal was to listen, ask questions and listen as to what it would take, in their opinion, to help us attract more volunteers and to also retain the volunteers that we have. So we came away, the chief and I, with three perspectives. First, it was involving ensuring that there were food and water supplies in our volunteer houses. And it took us a while to work that out, but we finally worked that out. And our goal there was never to have a volunteer firefighter have to reach into their own wallet, so to speak, to purchase supplies for those houses. So we worked it out. Ed Swinkowski's on the line here. He was very instrumental in helping us to work that out. We also heard about the need for training. And one of the things that came up was the possibility of North Haven building a training facility. So the chief and I immediately planned how we could do that. I decided to meet with the president of Quinnipiac University, President Judy Olion. And after a series of discussions with Quinnipiac's management, Quinnipiac gave us a voluntary payment which allowed us to underwrite a very significant portion of the cost. And that project now is in the process of being built. And the third thing we heard very clearly was an enhancement and an amendment on the Volunteer Firefighters Pension Program. So in addition to the captains, I'd like to thank all of the volunteers for their input. And in particular, Kurt Andrews, Mark Patron, Tony McKinney, who were instrumental in providing feedback to us, myself, Paul Janushevsky and also Ed Swinkowski in terms of how it should be structured. So the chief and I feel very strongly about this. We engaged our town attorney, Jeff Danafrio, who's here tonight. And we also have the support of our Board of Selectmen on this, as I presented this in one of our last meetings. So Alex, if you don't mind, I'd like you, if you would, to post the slides and I'll take everyone through what the changes are. And then the chief is here, Paul, and Jeff to answer any questions anyone may have. It's the right thing to do, ladies and gentlemen, to have this passed tonight.
Let me bring up that window, Mike. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so Alex, if you can go to the next slide. All right, these next nine or 10 slides, ladies and gentlemen, are highlighting the changes in the plan. Section 1.18, we eliminated the word "points" and we inserted the words "earned creditable service." Alex, next slide. Section 2.2, the old pension document required 20 years of credible service. So a firefighter who began volunteering after, let's say, his or her 45th birthday would be totally ineligible for a pension. So in section four, I'm sorry, in section seven, a four-tiered vesting schedule was created so that someone who has five years of service would be eligible for 25% of the monthly pension. 10 years would be eligible for 50% and 15 years for 75%. This tiered vesting schedule was designed to show those volunteers that there were step-level incentives for them to stay. And for those interested in volunteering as a firefighter, there was a vested schedule where they could see pension enhancement after these years of service. Alex? Section 4.1, we changed minimum retirement date from 65 to 60, but still with a minimum of 20 years' service. We felt that by bringing it down to 60, that's an added incentive for retention and perhaps attraction. Alex? Section 5.1, the minimum retirement amount changed from $200 to $350 plus $4 per month in excess of 25 years of service with a combined monthly maximum of $400 per month. Alex? Section 5.2, for simplicity, the old officer differential is consolidated to one quote "officer level" and the number of years as an officer is reduced from 10 years to five years at $3 per month per year as an officer, also subject to the $400 per month maximum. Alex? In section 6.3, in 2019, we adopted an amendment to pay a surviving spouse 50% of the normal volunteer pension if that firefighter passes away before retiring. We really thought this was the right thing to do to honor, God forbid, that fallen firefighter and, and help his family to a certain extent. Alex? Section 7.1, in 2019, we adopted a four-tiered vesting to allow a firefighter to collect a partial benefit for five, 10 or 15 years of service. And this was to incent firefighters to stay longer and provide a benefit for those that may join later in life. Alex? Section 8.4, the disability payment has been updated to be concurrent with the new monthly pension amounts. Alex? Section 13.1, deduction of the number of pension committee members to be comprised of three volunteer firefighters chosen by the volunteers in town, the first selectman, the finance director and the fire chief. And I believe, although it may not appear on the slide, we also voted to have a member of the public also as part of this. Alex? So that, ladies and gentlemen, are the changes in the plan. I'd like to thank once again all the volunteers, the volunteer captains, Kurt Andrews, Tony McKinney, Mark Patron, Chief Paul Janushevsky, Ed Swinkowski for his contributions and our town attorney, Jeff Danafrio. And I know the fire chief may have a few words, so I'll turn it back to the moderator to acknowledge Chief Paul Janushevsky.
Chief Janushevsky, you are, you are next up.
Evening, everybody. Paul Janushevsky, 15, Justine Drive. Uh, just to reiterate some of the points the first selectman had made and to give some backstory on, on some of these items as well. So again, these conversations started in 2018. This has been a project in the works now for some length of time. This has the unanimous... This has the unanimous support of all the volunteer leadership within the town of North Haven, represented by the three captains. Um, they are the ones who appointed a member to each of the, uh, a member from each of their companies to their respective pension committee. So why the changes since 1991? And, and what brought those about is it's important to remember the way that the volunteer system was set up in the town of North Haven for a long period of time. North Haven Fire Department relied very heavily on associations. And there was an association present for each of the volunteer stations that we have even today. And what happened was in 1991, those association leadership members were responsible for providing the point system, referenced throughout the document. That point system no longer pertains today. There's no way of keeping track of the points and how to obtain points. And this document was well overdue to get updated. And so when the volunteer leadership approached us about making some enhancements to it, uh, we took advantage of the opportunity to clean a document up to reflect what's currently happening and has been taking place now for the last several years in terms of accounting for credible years of service. I think that something important to note is what a credible year of service is. It's outlined in the document, but it is a member who attends 25% of incidents and 50% of drills on an annual basis. So this is not just every volunteer firefighter decides to sign up. There is a, uh, a vetting period, and there is a review period that takes place on a biannual basis, which allows us to look at the volunteers to ensure that there is a credible year of service served. Um, it's important to note that the town of North Haven has a number of volunteers that are not residents of North Haven. And that although we made some recent adjustments to provide an increase in a tax abatement, we're not able to do that if the volunteer is not a North Haven resident. Uh, this pension document does not pertain to just North Haven residents. Obviously, it's to all volunteers, and we're fortunate that some of our volunteers that do provide their service to the town of North Haven do live, uh, in surrounding towns. So this is a benefit for them as well. Um, going back quickly on some of the comments that came up at a previous meeting by the Board of Selectmen, we did incorporate that one additional person into the pension committee. So that will bring into a, a number of seven, and that will provide the odd number that was sought after. Uh, that's all that I have, and of course, any questions that anybody may have, I'm happy to answer them. But I think this is important that the, the individuals on the phone tonight and the, uh, the taxpayers on the phone tonight wholly support this. It's, it's important to retain the volunteers we have, and it will go a long ways towards attracting additional volunteers in the future.
Um, is there anyone else who wants to speak? And I don't see anyone in the chat box, so, um, I can see everyone's names, and as long as they're on here, if that's okay with Alex. Is there anyone who wants to speak? I can, you can raise your hand, or?
Nancy Barrett's hand has been raised.
There we go. Okay, Nancy Barrett.
Hi, everyone. Uh, this is Nancy Barrett. I live at, uh, 1 Cresview Drive in North Haven. Uh, I'm also a member of the Board of Finance, and I said this at the last Board of Finance meeting. I would just like to say that I wholly endorse this change. Uh, I sincerely support all of the hard work of our volunteer firefighters, uh, of course, in addition to our career firefighters, but I think that this is, uh, a well-deserved change. And, uh, I'd just like to say thank you very much. And I'd also like to point out, uh, credit goes to Sally Buemi, our, our third selectwoman, who actually made the suggestion for the odd number of members on the, uh, the committee to bring it up to a total of seven, and to include someone, uh, from our community as, as a member of that committee. So I think that that's also very important in our town meeting form of government to also have the input of our public. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I don't see anyone.
No. Anyone else who would like to speak? Asking again, anybody on the phone who would like to speak, who's called in?
Uh, Mr. McKinnon, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, I just want to be recognized as a voter.
Okay, Mr. McKinnon, you joined late. All right, Alex, that's Mr. Tony McKinnon.
Yep.
Anyone else who came in late after about five or 10 after six? We just need to make sure we have your name.
Ma'am.
Yes, who is talking to me?
My name is Leonard Thomas, 7 Upper State Street.
Okay, would you like to speak, Mr. Thomas?
Uh, no, I just want to be registered as a voter.
Okay, Mr. Linos.
I have you, Mr. Thomas, as well. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Kurt Sendline at 6 Winchester Drive, to be recognized as a voter.
Could you just spell your last name, sir?
S is in Sam, E-N-D-L-E-I-N. 6 Winchester Drive.
Thank you.
Mary Jane Mulligan, 69 Highland Park Road.
Thank you very much, Mary Jane. Are you on the phone or are you on video and I'm not seeing you?
On the phone.
Okay, thank you, Mary Jane.
Thank you.
Ms., um, Mr. Sendline, are you on the phone or video conferencing?
Um, I'm on a video Zoom.
You're, you're signing in right now?
I'm on the Zoom.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jen, Jen Atkins has her hand up, raised hand.
Atkins.
Jen Atkins?
Hi, good, yes, good evening, everybody. Just one question. On the slide presentation, it mentioned 50% to a surviving spouse. What if the firefighter is not married but does have other living family members?
Uh, Mr. Januszewski, do you want to answer that, chief?
Yeah, I don't know that we've been approached with that question yet. Perhaps, uh, town attorney Jeff DiNofrio can, can address that.
Sure, Jeff DiNofrio, attorney for the town. The amendment to the pension plan would cover a spouse, surviving spouse.
Okay, Ms. Atkins, does that answer your question at this time?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'm not seeing any hands, but I'm trying to make sure.
Uh, moderator Sally Buemi, 5 Blossom Drive.
Yes, third selectman Buemi.
Yes, thank you. I would just, uh, like to say again what I said at the Board of Selectmen meeting, that I fully support, uh, this amendment to the pension plan. And I agree with the chief that it would do, uh, a lot to, uh, to not only attract but to retain volunteers. And we certainly need, uh, to do that, and it, and it is a strong statement on behalf of the town in support of our volunteer firefighters. And I'd like to say a quick hello to Kurt Sendline. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay. It appears that the discussion of this agenda item has concluded. Uh, we will now vote on the resolution for item number one on this evening's agenda. Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-148(c)(5a), the amended Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan established July 1, 1991, and amended on June 27, 2019, is approved, and the first selectman is authorized to execute said amended Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan in the form presented to the town meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Linos will now call the roll of electors.
Can I just have the name of the person who seconded the motion?
Who seconded that motion, please?
Tony McKinnon.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name.
Tony McKinnon.
Tony McKinnon, thank you very much.
Now, electors, when you hear your name called, please signify by saying aye if you are in favor and nay if you are opposed.
Excuse me, Ms. Moderator, I, I just have a quick question. Is the effective date January 21st, which is what the actual text says, or is it the 27th, which is not written in here?
Um, who would, uh, Attorney DiNofrio, can you answer that question, please?
Sure, effective upon passage.
Okay, does that answer your question, Ms. Barrett?
Okay, I, it's just that the very first line says, uh, hereby amends effective January 21st. So that should really be changed to January 27th.
Yeah, when it was drafted, it probably was based on what I was told the expected date of the town meeting was.
Mm-hmm.
So the actual document, the dates will have to be reconciled to reflect if it passes that it was January 25.
Right, and then at the very bottom of the document, it said executed this blank day of January. So I assume that is fill in the blank for whatever day we're voting, but, uh, the, the two should just jive, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I assume that the town clerk, that'll all be noted, uh, whether, when, if this passes, if the resolution passes?
Okey-dokey.
Okay, so I'm gonna hand this over to Mr. Linos, who will now call the roll of electors.
I'm gonna go down the original list and with the additions at the end, uh, and then we can, um, this is people that are in the video, and then we can go to, uh, the phone. Carl Vians.
Aye.
Valerie Goodkin.
Aye.
Jennifer Caldwell.
Aye.
Maurice Barney.
Aye.
Jennifer Atkins.
Aye.
Mark Petron.
Aye.
Paul Januszewski.
Aye.
John Quimby.
Aye.
Mai Tan.
Aye.
Mark De Nicola.
Aye.
Nancy Barrett.
Aye.
And Carol Atkins.
Aye.
Joseph Sissignano.
Aye.
Thomas Crilly.
Aye.
Michael Frida.
Aye.
Lori Varney.
Aye.
Roberta De Nicola.
Aye.
Mary Catherine Petron.
Aye.
Our moderator, uh, Teresa Ranciatovili.
I, I don't usually vote on these.
Okay.
Abstain, abstain.
Anthony Minicucci.
Aye.
Pasquale Mercurio.
Aye.
Robert and Linda Kovak.
Aye.
Aye.
William Piper.
Aye.
And then we had Tony McKinnon.
Aye.
Leonard Thomas.
Aye.
Kurt Sendline.
Aye.
And if you have the, do you have the phone roll?
I do.
Stacy?
I'll do that one. Uh, Sally Buemi?
Aye.
Jane Andrews?
Aye.
Kurt Andrews? Mary, Mary Jane Mulligan?
Aye.
And that is all I have.
Okay, um, the resolution passes. This concludes our special town meeting. There being no further lawful business before us tonight, I hereby declare the meeting adjourned. The minutes of this meeting will be made available by the town clerk as soon as possible. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.